The meeting of Lunedary School Board be held on Tuesday, June 6th, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Lunedary High School, 295 Mammoth Road, Lunedary, New Hampshire, in the café. The meeting will also be broadcast on local cable access 21, as well as the district's YouTube channel. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. Upcoming meetings, June 8th, 2023, the Baccalaureate at the Capital Center for Arts at 7:00 PM. June 9th, graduation at SNHU Arena at 7:00 PM. And June 20th, '23, regular meeting right here in the café at 7:00 PM. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Thank you. All right. Moving on to announcements, presentations, 4.1, Grace Houston.
Yes, good evening. So I'm pleased to welcome up our German teacher, Brooke Ent and Grace Houston, to share some exciting news that we have. Grace is a fantastic junior and she's done quite well on the National German Exam, which Ms. Ent will tell you all about in the scholarship that followed.
Yes. So each year, my students at all levels participate in the National German Exam. It's not something we prep for, it's just something I kind of do to see where they're at, how they do. And with the National German Exam, you can win certain scholarships and prizes. So I'm here to announce that Grace Houston has been selected for a travel scholarship, and three weeks from today, she will be boarding a plane, flying to Konbach, Germany, and spending three weeks there. So to do this, yes. Applause Grace. So Grace is a sophomore, she's in her second year of German. She has no background besides Duolingo and two years of my class. To win the scholarship, she scored gold on the National German Exam, so she was in the 90th percentile in the nation. Once we got that, we were able to apply her. She filled out an application, half in English, half in German. I submitted her recommendation. And from there, she had to complete a panel interview, also half in English, half in German. Notably, she did this with a woman named Helga Schreckenberger, who sounds like the scariest person ever. And from there, she was select-- no, from there, you had to do another exam, about a four-hour-long German exam, speaking, reading, writing, and listening. And then she was able to be the New England candidate. From there, they narrowed down the selection process, it's about a dozen kids nationwide. She unfortunately was not selected from there, she became an alternate candidate. So we were like, all right, this is it, next year, this is our time, we're going to do this. We didn't have to wait, the spot opened up, and she's on her way. So I am so proud of Grace, I can't say enough about how amazing she is, how talented, curious. I am so proud of you, and she's going to be amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And onto 4.2, Matthew Thornton, Alice Alarm.
Been so small on a few comments. I'm going to start with kind of sharing what happened last week. I put some pictures in the public packet. What you see right now is a picture of a lockdown button. It is from a much earlier generation of when we were preparing for emergencies in Lunedary School District. I think the first time I looked at one of these last week, I thought I was looking at a thermostat. There are a few of these in each of our buildings. Again, they were made for a much different earlier time for emergency preparedness. But if you do hit them, we did update them this year to basically say enact Dallas, which is unfortunately what happened at Matthew Thornton last week. They are very different than what we are putting in now and over the summer, our alertis buttons. So you can see with our alertis buttons, there's a clamshell, it's pretty clear, don't push it, it's only for emergencies, and we'll be doing a lot of training around why we would push them. These buttons, there's a few of them, they're only in areas where adults are. Unfortunately, last week, there was an adult in a new area that wasn't quite sure what it was, which kind of put everything in motion. So I'll turn that over to Amity, so she can talk about how Matthew Thornton responded, responded very well, and then I'll have a few comments to say after that.
Yeah. First, I want to start off by saying just how proud of my staff and the students that I am. There had been a lot of questions in the fall when we've drilled, like, what if, what if, what if? And so this kind of answered what they would do if the alarm went off. We said that we would never set off the alarm without some sort of warning when we were drilling, so that in their heads had them all respond appropriately. It was quite amazing how everybody listened, they checked hallways, grabbed kids who were in the hallways bathrooms, we had big buddies over, they checked with their neighbors to think about who was going to blockade, how they could go out through multiple classrooms to get outside. There was a bullying presentation going on in our cafeteria where our SRO was, who ran right in to look to see what was going on while the rest of the group was going out and hiding in the field. So altogether, the whole building was emptied or barricaded within three minutes. And we had some people from the high school who came over to check in on us, and within six minutes, everybody was back, because you go anywhere, you don't just all go to your fire drill spots, but they were all back. And the administration was taking attendance to make sure that everybody was accounted for, and they were. It was just awesome. And from there, the staff and students were shaken. We were able to send an email out to families, and we had a debrief with the staff after school, and then the next morning, a lot of adults were there early, we were talking through all the things. It was very unfortunate that it had to happen, and it was scary and all those things, but it did empower the staff to know that they focused on getting everybody to safety and doing what they had been trained to do.
Yeah, and I think back a couple of years, there was something called CopSync we used to do emergency notifications. There were times that CopSync was pushed, and we had these false alarms. But the difference now is every staff, every student is well-trained. They will react literally right away. And I think, you know, I'd like to say, we're not going to have any more false alarms, but I think there's always human error. You know, so I think the good thing from this is you can see our Emergency Operations Committee did such a good job with our SROs training everyone, they were ready to go. And everything was resolved very quickly. I think that the first notification the district office got was there was a false alarm, and, you know, so that was good. And I also just want to thank Assistant Principals Abby Sloper, Ryan O'Connor, Crystal Rich, and Officer Tufo, they were over here at the high school, they ran to an Alice alarm. They don't necessarily need to do that, but they did that because they're great people, and it just speaks to the partnership and, you know, community we have around here. So it was definitely a scary moment, I think Matthew Thornton was definitely shook up, you know, but they responded well, we debriefed well, and that's kind of what happened last week. I don't know if there's any questions.
I just have one question.
Sure.
I had heard a little bit after the fact, and I know that it was scary for some, as it must have been, and I just wanted to make sure that staff have support if they need it. It can be like a little traumatizing to go through something like that, and I just didn't know if there was anything in place for anybody who needed it, or obviously, they know they can come to you, but--
Yeah, so the debrief was really good for that, people could ask questions, people could kind of process. It was interesting, because we went back to see how long, we used some of the footage to see how long it transpired to a lot of them, it felt like it was 20 minutes, and it was three. So I think they processed, had that time together, and then the next morning, based on some of the things that had come out of the debrief, we were able to touch base with those people, and reach out, and ask if they had more questions. I think once the kids came in, then they felt better about everything.
Yeah.
But we did have a few parents reach out, and we had the school counselors check in with those kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things about it. Obviously, never want something like this to happen, it's not ideal to have to deal with that, and it was a traumatic event for the kids, and it's a traumatic event for all the staff, but it created a unique opportunity to be able to see how the staff and the kids would actually react in reality. It's very different when you have an announced fire alarm, or even an unannounced fire alarm, because it's not quite the same thing as what they're preparing for in this instance. And so to see how they would have reacted in reality to a situation of this gravity, it gave me a lot of solace as a dad of two young kids, to know that this training actually has worked this well, to see that within three minutes, it was all buttoned up. So thank you to the staff, and I really, I think it's a testament to the training that they've gone through and how worthwhile it's been. So thank you all for that.
Good, Kim. Sarah? Good. Amity, thank you, and again, echo what Tim said, thank the staff, and it was well put back together, and well done.
They were awesome.
Yes.
They really were.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that update. Okay. Before we go on, I want to let the board know that 8.4 on the superintendent's report is going to be striked in that area, and what we are going to do is during public comment, if they can comment on any public comment at that time, then I would ask them, you know, they will ask for attention and address it at that point. So 8.4 will be stricken, and if they are able to reply to a public comment on information or a question, they will jump in, if not, they will get back to the people or at the next meeting. Okay? Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. Public comment, before I open it to the floor, I got a few things to say, and I think a colleague and a superintendent and assistant superintendent may have something to say. Regarding some emails the board received after the last board meeting, concerns over statements that were made during public comment at our last meeting, I just want everyone to understand that everything that was said is protected under freedom of speech. This was confirmed by the district's attorney. So it did take some time, with the superintendent reached out, had them watch the film and that, so that is as far as I can go on that. But to end, what I have to say is, I just, I want everybody to speak their mind, but we got to be kind. We want to be kind, we're here for the students, we're here for the community, this is a school environment, and we can get resolution on a lot of questions beforehand and that, so please reach out to any board member or district office, and let's think of the students moving forward, and not telling you, you can't say what you want, but that's just how I feel. I think we all sit up here for the students and the families of this town to make Lunedary the best school district in the state of New Hampshire, and we're headed that way. So thank you for a few minutes, and I'll open it to any of my colleagues that may have something. Amanda?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. We talked about Matthew Thornton a little bit, but I kind of got these thoughts down earlier, so I will just go ahead and say it anyway. So I just wanted to take a minute to share a few thoughts I had over the last few weeks in thinking about it. I found that it mostly related to providing a safe school environment for our students. So we just talked about the incident at Matthew Thornton, that was unplanned, and I'm so glad that it was a false alarm, as we all are, but this isn't always the case. So I just wanted to extend my gratitude to our staff members and SROs who acted so quickly in line with the training, and hearing more about it from some staff accounts, people really ready to do anything possible to keep our kids safe. And I really wanted to recognize that for many of these people, it didn't feel like a false alarm in the moment, and it could be pretty terrifying to be in that situation. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows how much they're appreciated, and sometimes things like this creep up on us later, so if anyone needs any support, just to please reach out. Next, I wanted to address public comment at the last meeting, which also, in my opinion, has a link to school, safe environments. And as Bob said, everybody has a right to speak their mind, but I wanted to start off by saying how proud I am of the students who bravely shared their experiences during the meeting. You know, I'm not a student, and it's sometimes really hard to get up here and say how you feel, and that can be really difficult. So I was so impressed that they took this opportunity to share their feelings and give feedback, and it's hugely important to get involved and share your perspective, and it's really important to the school community to do that. And I'm really glad that there are students who found support on Challenge Day. So I just wanted to thank the students who spoke for having a say in their schools. And I will kind of wrap up by saying, I think that it's important to remember in the spirit of kindness, that in our town, we not only have students who identify as LGBTQ+, but we also have students whose families who look different. So identifying as LGBTQ does not have anything to do with cults, it's not the goal of that community to turn anyone gay, or to force any lifestyle onto any other person. I think just being cognizant that some of our students have single parents, two moms, two dads, are being raised by family members, foster care, adopted, really, or any other combination of those things. They are all welcome here in my book, and different does not mean bad. The purpose of the rainbow flag promotes inclusion and acceptance. Nazi symbolism promote exclusion and reflect a horrible and brutal mistreatment of a large group of people based on their religious beliefs. So I just want to leave everybody with some data about tolerance. Forty-five percent of LGBTQ+ youth have considered suicide, however, these youth who felt social support reported attempting suicide at less than half of the rate of those who had low or moderate social support. So I just want to let our students know that they are all accepted and valued, supported, and they're perfect the way they are, and they all belong here.
Second. Thank you. Sarah? You good?
Yeah, a couple of statements I want to read. There's two things I really want to say. I mean, just to build off what Bob already said, you know, the purpose of public comment is to allow the public to literally comment at a school meeting around what's being deliberated, the policies, or any topic, that's the main point of it. Public comment is definitely protected by the First Amendment, but that does not mean public comment should devolve into a space where we attack our students, vilify them, and literally demonize them. I'm shocked I even need to remind people in the public that we shouldn't be doing this to our students. We're a public school system, it's our mission to support our students on their journey to adulthood, and then attack them and tear them down. That's not the point of this space. I'm very proud of our student speakers from our last school board meeting, but I'm sorry for what they had to witness and be targeted for, that's a very sad and frustrating moment. That's my first point. Second point what I want to make is, I'll throw a little graphic up here, we talked about it last time, but one of the big successes this year is our Communications Committee kind of put this in motion, like, how do we solve problems? How do we work with our community? How do we work with our families to really figure things out? I mean, as Bob said, we want to be the best we possibly can be, this has been one of the real successes this year. You know, so when problems come to public comment, what I would ask is, we go through the process first, because we can usually solve the vast majority of problems that come our way. So if I go back to last week, if there truly was an issue with an article from the Lancer Spirit, there's a faculty advisor to talk to, there's an assistant principal who's in charge of student activities to then talk to if that's not resolved, there's the principal of the high school to talk to, then there's a superintendent. There's four different levels to kind of resolve issues before they come to here. So that's just a reminder of how this works. I mean, I think what we're interested in as a school system is continue to do a great job and get better at what we do, but we can only do that if we're being treated fairly in that process. We have a good process and it works. And I think what we've seen throughout this year is, problems do come our way, problems come to principals, problems come to superintendents, problems come to teachers, but when those problems are come to us in good faith, we're able to solve them and work very well with our families, so I just want to remind ourselves of that. Those two points. Jason, want to say anything?
Everybody good? All right. Before I open it to the floor, I just wanted to go over the policy, because I didn't do a very good job in the past couple of meetings about time. There is a five-minute policy that will stand on public comment. I will let the speaker know when 30 seconds are left, and that, and then that'll give you time to wrap up and that, so I just want to, I will hold to that. I did let a few speakers go over that before, I apologize for that. We'll try to set this as a new beginning here on the time limit and that. I have a stopwatch, so at 30 seconds left, four minutes and 30 seconds, I will let you know to try to wrap up in the next 30 seconds, and then we'll move on to the next speaker. So with that note, I'll open the floor to public comment, please. Just state your name and address, please, before you speak.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Tiffany Gagnon, 17 Buckingham Drive. However, I am reading a letter written by Caroline Edwards of 5 Tannodrew Way. She unfortunately has laryngitis, so she can't physically be here to speak, so these are her words. I feel compelled to address the discord that arose at the last school board meeting's public comment. I would love to applaud and wholeheartedly thank the three high school students who stood up and spoke. The disparity in tone to the three adults who spoke disparagingly about Mental Health Day, our LGBTQIA+ community, and use of gender-neutral bathrooms left me enraged and heartbroken. The threatening tone that came from these three speakers unequivocally cements the dire need of social-emotional learning in our schools, town, and community. Calling the LGBTQIA+ community a satanic death cult is tantamount to verbal assault. Saying that the absence of God is the presence of evil is a provocative statement in hate speech. Public schools are secular by design. They should be a place for all kids free of discrimination, whether it's race, gender, religion, or even geography. Hooked at students you belong here to. The First Amendment to the Constitution protects free speech, and it also protects the freedom to practice or not practice any religion. If you believe in freedom, then you should stand for the right of every single person to be free to practice their basic human rights. A basic human right is using the bathroom. We don't need to fully understand the nuances of gender identity to know that all persons have the right to use a bathroom in a school. To stand up and demand to know the bathroom policy after listening to a student bravely express their despair at finding a gender-neutral bathroom after school hours is a prime example of why we need Challenge Days. If we want to discuss what is and what is not offensive, standing up to speak against a segment of society who is suffering and has the highest mortality rate from suicide is easily offensive. Then, speaking up for some students who have no need to stand because they do not face bullying, discrimination, or unfair treatment is frankly embarrassing. Mental Health Day is geared towards our endangered youth who live these truths. Exclusion is what our vulnerable youth face, and to invalidate this by speaking up for the privileged is again screaming out for more SEL in this world. Public schools should not promote religion, but they should promote social skills and equity. I saw representatives of our promising future in the three high schoolers who spoke up at the last meeting. Challenge Day promotes empathy, and that we put ourselves in the shoes of the downtrodden, the outcasts, and the disenfranchised. In today's society, are we really the land of the free and the home of the brave if we are impinging on basic freedoms and silencing the brave? Empathy and social-emotional learning belong in our schools, and tolerance and cruelty do not. Please reach out to support our students by listening to their needs, and whenever possible, offer help. Make yourself seen and heard, speak up in favor of our students, speak out against harassment, ask honest questions, listen with an open heart, and always show love. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tara Miles, 11 Lancaster Drive. My pronouns are she/her. To the school board members, I appreciate your volunteerism in our community and the work that you're doing to make Lunedary a great place for, to raise our children. To the administration, teachers, and support staff, your job is one of the most important in our society, and you are so valuable. I'm so thankful that we have amazing educators here at Lunedary. I'm here today to speak up after the vile remarks made at the last school board meeting. I'm not here to change the hearts and minds of our close-minded neighbors. I know that's not possible. I'm here because words matter and standing up matters. To the students in the GSA, LGBTQIA+ youth and allies, I stand with you, I support you. You are loved, and you are welcome in all spaces. There is a community behind you that cares about you, about your well-being, about delivering you a great future here in this community, or in the world beyond. You are catalysts for change, and your authenticity, your willingness to put yourself out there, your drive for good, they inspire hope in me for our future here in Lunedary, and for the future of this country. A few of you stood here at the meeting last week and spoke up, despite the vile words being directed at you. That is strength, courage, and shows perseverance. I have no doubt that you will be forces for good in this world, but we have to get you there first. We have to educate you and support you, and provide you the resources to be your best selves. Please know that if you don't find that at home, or maybe don't feel comfortable at school, the Lunedary Cares Group is here to help you find resources, or even just someone to talk to, so please reach out. To the students who were reported as uncomfortable during Challenge Day due to topics related to the LGBTQIA+ community, I encourage you to open your minds and hearts to listen. Look deeper than the rhetoric, look at them as your peers, peers you can learn from. I hope you all make it to college, but remember, when you do, you will find more instances that conflict with your own personal worldview. That's kind of the point, to learn, grow, evolve, embrace the discomfort, have hard conversations, challenge yourself. But if it's too much, you are empowered, as you were on Challenge Day, to not participate, to remove yourself from the situation without imposing your view or discomfort on others. It's okay to coexist with folks that you may not share all of the same beliefs with. Lead with kindness, give people a chance. I think you'll find we're all more alike than we are different. To the school board, these meetings are intended to help our community deliver the best education possible to our children. We must maintain a level of decorum here. I support the following three asks raised by one of our lovely neighbors. First, to return to well-defined rules of engagement during public comment, such as a time limit, one turn at the mic, limited number of speakers, I heard you, thank you. To seek the counsel of legal advisors regarding the parameters of protected speech as it relates to hate speech targeting our children in our schools. And that each and every board member and present district office representative should immediately counter incidents of hate speech with acknowledgement that those sentiments do not reflect the Lunedary Public Schools' mission, giving wings to children's dreams. Elected and appointed leaders of our schools should stand in solidarity, affirming the identities and the lived experiences of our most marginalized demographic group. It is your duty to speak up and speak up when such egregious statements are made in this forum. Finally, I was very sad to hear from the mom whose son was being bullied. I hope that addressing this is a top priority for the administration. That student also deserves to be educated in a safe and welcoming environment that fosters academic growth and personal well-being. To that student, you are loved by your community, you are wanted here, you are supported, it gets-- It gets better, I promise. And to the parents of those who are doing this to that student, do better. You can and you should. Let's all work together to continue to build a community that supports each other and seeks to do good. It is the only way successfully forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Morocco and for Westwood Drive. Across the nation, and indeed within our own beloved town, we are seeing the effects of increased anti-LGBTQIA rhetoric and proposals to erase the transgender community from the public eye. Well, I am here tonight to say that this is a time of necessary action on the part of our Londonderry schools, our residents, and our families to unite in solidarity around our shared values that all Londonderry residents belong and that our LGBTQIA+ students deserve to thrive here. We need to be decidedly less reactive to this noisy minority and to start taking proactive measures towards our responsibility in ensuring that all students are given the tools, environment, and vision to thrive irrespective of their identities or lived experiences. There is a correlation between schoolyard bullying and the bullying that occurred during public comment of the previous school board meeting. If we as a district aspire to protect youth from bullying at the hands of their peers, we must also safeguard queer youth and their allies from the dehumanizing behaviors of some adult members of this community during public district meetings. We have heard the complaints of a few that the visibility of transgender people or trans-affirming practices makes them uncomfortable. To these folks, I remind you that this is a you issue, not the responsibility of trans identities or their allies or the school district. Take responsibility for your emotions. Examine them. Own them. Stop projecting. Stop outsourcing the responsibility. If you harbor anti-LGBTQIA sentiments, it is a you problem. You don't get to regulate someone else's existence to accommodate your discomfort. When drinking fountains were designated for whites only, it wasn't about the water. It was about controlling and dehumanizing a marginalized group so that another group could hold greater power and control over resources. These uncomfortable feelings towards transgender youth isn't about bathrooms. It isn't about sports. It isn't about a rainbow flag. This is about demoralizing and dehumanizing vulnerable children to use them as political and/or religious pawns. Hate has no place here in Londonderry. Hate has no place in our public schools. Keep it out of these district meetings. Recognize that even in a recent poll conducted by Fox Media, transgender issues ranked at the very bottom of interest for their responders. This cultural backlash against transgender people is mostly performative grandstanding. LGBTQIA+ people are people. Stop hurting them. Remember, we are agents of change. Remember, the children are watching. Remember that we endeavor to make our public schools a place for learners to explore, to expand, and to embrace the big and diverse world that lays ahead. Be visibly in their corners. Honor their identities. They are real and true and should be embraced. Our youth are ready to soar. Our mission statement says, "Giving wings to children's dreams." Protect those wings. To our LGBTQIA+ families and faculty, I see you. I believe you. I celebrate you. Hold us accountable. You deserve to thrive within this community, and it is our responsibility to ensure that this happens in your lifetime. Thank you.
Hi. Can I stand a second? Sure. I wasn't attacking any individual group. What I was attacking was the cult of personality that they have, okay? You talk about tolerance and kindness when a huge fat man with green hair online tells me, "Try to stop me going into your daughter's bathroom." When men in the sports are beating girls that work very hard to get first place swimming, wrestling, they get in their faces pounded in by men, natural men. I'm not saying that people don't get respected and loved, but it's gone beyond that. And if you can't see it, that's what a cult is. I read to you the WHO standards for three- and four-year-olds. Nobody mentioned that in any letter. UN has the same policy. WHO is going to be running your medical care soon, okay? All these things are connected. If you don't know what communism is, if you don't know about culture warfare, look it up because that's what's going on. This isn't about hate. I don't hate anybody. I'm against somebody forcing somebody to be something else. And where's that coming from? Gender-affirming proaction? Do I need to go into the discussions of what that is? I don't know. Is she referring to gender-affirming care? Do I need to describe what that's like? Have you seen it? Because the governor of Florida released pictures of it. It should be illegal in all the states. People, when they're 18, they can do what they want, but when they're a child, you cannot push that. I said it before, if you don't protect these kids, you've gone too far. If you don't know what a replicant mind is, look it up because it's when you can't tell immoral from moral. That's what's going on. It's immoral to push a child in that direction who has a mental illness. That's immoral. And if you can't determine it, I suggest you read Matthew because he tells it very clear how the end will be, and this is how it will be, all right? Romans 1 describes it too. I don't know. So that wasn't my intention, but what's going on is very clear. Now, there's always going to be homosexual people. That's fine. Do what you want. This is America. But you just can't push it on children. You just can't push a certain ideology on children. That's what it is. It's an ideology. I don't know. Any questions for me? I mean, everybody seems to have a comment about me, so if you have a question, shoot. No?
I don't know what he's saying, but it does sound great. I didn't speak my own words the first time. Is it okay if I come up again on my own behalf?
Could you just let me make sure everybody else comes up first if you don't mind?
Jonathan Esposito, 5 Shelly Drive in Londonderry. Actually, just came to sit in on the school board meeting tonight. I had no intention of speaking on public comment regardless of what was on the agenda. I do wish to ask Mr. Slater, I believe I have to direct my remarks to you as the chair, that if you were going to enforce the rules more firmly, as you said that you were going to, equal application of that would be appropriate. I do believe the superintendent made a remark that public comment should not be used to direct insults or degrading remarks toward students. I did hear the citizen who was standing here to my right make a very clear remark. No, I'm sorry, I believe it was another citizen, make a remark that if certain students were made uncomfortable by the activities that occurred at the high school, that it was a them problem. Now, if I'm mistaken, if those remarks were directed to the adults in the room, then we're certainly all adults here participating in civic government. But if those remarks were directed at students who were made uncomfortable by the activities at the high school, that should be addressed by the board. That is out of line. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak?
How you doing? Mike McNich, 3 Nottingham Court. So we've got four kids. I didn't intend to come up and speak here either, but we've got four kids in the schools between LMS and here. And I was here a couple of weeks ago, actually in this room, for one of our kids was getting inducted into the TRIM Honors Society. In fact, Mr. Parent got, he was the first honorary inductee that night. And that was a great night. And then I went home and I watched the video of this meeting, which was held in a bandroom. I couldn't believe what I was watching and what I was hearing. Just couldn't believe it, the things that were being said. It's just very, very disappointing, especially coming just a couple of days or so, you know, within a week certainly of a tragedy up in Manchester, of a child up there who took their own life because of this very issue. People need to have more compassion, and that's one of the things that, you know, over the weekend, we were up at St. Anne's for a dance recital that our kids had. And while I was out there during the intermission, I grabbed a copy of the St. Anne's school paper, took a look at that, and just looking through it, there was an article, article. The word that was being used by the state rep at the last meeting was wrong. That article that she referred to, not an article, it's an editorial. People who know journalism, they know the difference. It's the difference between an article, which is, you know, generally news-based, what have you, fact-based versus opinion, which is what the piece that she was talking about was, the piece by the editorial board of the Lancer Spirit. And I mean, I felt watching it that she, as a state rep, was trying to put some pressure on the people who wrote that, and I don't think that was right. But regardless, I'm reading this, you know, I'm taking a look at the St. Anne's school paper, and there was an article talking about, again, you know, about this issue. And it struck me that they referred to, you know, they were kind of, it was definitely talking about how it's, you know, it's a very, it's a challenging issue, especially, you know, talking about Catholic college there and everything, right? And the person who wrote the piece referred to the, quoted a statement from the Diocese of Manchester talking about how people needed to handle this issue and handle, you know, people, you know, approach it with compassion. I didn't hear any compassion from some of the people who spoke at this meeting a few weeks ago, and I just don't think that's right. And so, you know, we try to teach our kids to stand up for what's right, to, you know, to do what's right. You know, we've got friends, very close friends, who have, you know, gone through some of these issues with, you know, transgender children of their own. It's a very, very difficult thing. The support means more than anybody could possibly imagine. You know, I can't even imagine it myself, but supporting them, that's the best that we can do. That's what we can do. And so that's what I'm here to do, is to try to be supportive for those folks in our community here. So that's all. Thank you.
Hi. Nancy Hendricks, 14, King John Drive, Londonderry. This meeting, the last meeting must be on a lot of people's minds, Bob, because I'm here to comment on it as well. There were some comments made here at your last board meeting about tuitioning students into our district, and I found those comments somewhat misleading, so I felt compelled to come and share perhaps a different point of view with you tonight. Besides the obvious, that we have an incredibly remarkable school district, we have no idea why parents tuition their students into our district. Maybe parents are trying to move into Londonderry and can't locate housing yet, but they want their student in our Londonderry schools, so they tuition that student into our school. Maybe a student has parents who serve in the military and they are returning from being deployed and want to tuition their child into our schools before locating housing. Maybe a tuitioned student has lived in another country, has experienced a different culture, and can share those experiences with our students. Maybe the student has learned to speak a different language and can share it with his classmates or her classmates. Is there something wrong with any of that? Each student that is tuitioned into our district brings an opportunity for our students' experiences to be enriched and enhanced. Conversely, our students also have the opportunity to enrich and enhance and make friends with someone new. Again, is there something wrong with this? The comments that were made here about tuitioning students into our district makes the tuitioning of a student or students sound bad, dark, sinister, something that is a negative influence on our students. I simply disagree. However, I did agree with one comment that was made, which was that it's all about the children. I happen to agree. Anytime we as a district are presented with an opportunity to expose our children to learning from another child, well, that's just magic. Anytime the district has an opportunity to create new learning experiences for our children, whether those experiences come from a new academic program or making friends with a new student, then it's our responsibility to be supportive. These experiences and friendships will last our students a lifetime, and they create a deeper understanding for our children for the world that we live in. New experiences and tuitioned students are not to be feared or brushed aside with disdain, but to be embraced. I know that you're not far away from the budget planning for the next year, and I ask you as a board to remain open-minded about tuitioning students into our district because after all, it is all about our children. Thank you.
Good evening. Tony DiFrancesco, 1 Cheshire Court. I'm here tonight because I was confronted at the post office last week. Topic of conversation was, who are you to talk at school board meetings like you're an expert? Well, here I am again. I'm a product of public education. I'm a product of public elementary school, public high school, public college, where I received a Bachelor of Science degree, also public postgraduate, Master of Education And I'm proud to say that I'm a first-generation college graduate and my family. I would not trade my public education for anything in the world, and I'm proud to be a product of public education. Public education is what makes America great. That certainly can be a topic of debate. And so I went through some papers that I had and some books that I had, and I called a few resources that I had. And by the way, I just, I have to get this one little dig in. I got my master's degree when you actually had to go to the college and attend classes. It's a little bit different now, but again, I would not trade that experience either. To be able to talk your thesis and present your thesis to a panel like this of professors is pretty daunting, but it certainly prepares you for the real world as well. And so what I found was some goals of the American public school system and what they should be. Prepare for college and workforce. Providing universal access to education. Equal education. Helping children fulfill their potential. Producing well-rounded individuals. The public education that we have here, I know for a fact, allows for young people to be exposed to a variety of topics and provides general base of knowledge for all citizens on all topics. It also fosters democracy, does public education. And that's good because an educated population that is able to consider different viewpoints and is aware of and engages in those topics creates for a more well-rounded community and creates a strong democracy. Now, I have to tell you, you all know, because I've said this to you before, public education and the basis of public education is under attack at the state level, at the federal level, and at the local level. And please understand that there are 26,000 people in this town, and the fabric of public education and the fabric of the town side of government is being torn apart by a couple of dozen people. So please, continue to do your job. You're doing a great job. Let our students debate. Let our students be...
It was very stressful for the kids at the time, but when they came home, they were actually excited to tell me about how it all went. So, as stressful as it was for everybody, I'm really proud of all the teachers and staff, how nicely they prepared the children. And let's hope we'll never have to use that drill in real life, but at least we know we're prepared. The second, I just have a couple of comments to the recent meeting and the comments that were said today. School is not a place for under-eight children to be bombarded with information that could exacerbate their natural inner confusion. Growing up is hard enough as it is. I do not believe kids should be exposed and pressured into contemplating ideologies that prioritize sexuality and identity above real-world skills. Children need to be focused on learning pragmatic skills like math, how to be a good friend, setting boundaries, basic common communication, and how to be a team player. Queer theory and gender ideology are not necessary for development or self-discovery. They certainly were not necessary for my generation. When children are exposed to overly sexual material too soon, it can cause behavioral issues that lead them to dangerous situations. The LGBTQI-plus flag has no place at school. Let's call it for what it is. The LGBTQ flag is a sexual flag, represents nothing other than sexual things like gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender questioning. What business does it have to be at school? LGBT community preaches love and acceptance, but unfortunately has been hijacked by radical activists who are now pushing extreme concepts onto society, specifically targeting children in recent years. I directly oppose the sexualization and indoctrination of children. I care about the safety of children. Safe adults do not ask children to keep secrets from their parents. Asking students about their gender, what their pronouns are, whether or not they should be telling their parents, it should not be happening at school. We respect right to freedom and rights of parents everywhere to decide what their children are exposed to. Not all parents want their children to learn about queer ideology and gender theory. Not all parents have time or ability to homeschool their children. You don't have to like us, but we may not always like your LGBT agenda to be pushed onto our children. I want to respect everybody, and I want to make sure that you can live the way you want to live, but these are children, so let's not confuse them too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, actually, to the group and speakers before me that preached kindness. I encourage everybody to watch a couple previous town hall meetings where the same people preaching kindness scream bad words, and I don't want to even say it here, at fellow community members. So, let's look at the hypocrisy, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Fitzgerald, Londonderry. I was just checking to see if there was an answer to my question from the last school board meeting regarding the bathroom policy.
Regarding the email that I sent you yesterday? Yes, the staff is working on that, and you'll have a response beginning of next week like I sent to you yesterday, Christine.
So, I just figured it would be just a known policy. It's either a yes or a no question.
They have to have several people look through that policy and make sure everything is on, you know, written down as performed in the building. So, it has to go through every department.
All right.
Okay.
I don't understand what the big deal is about asking that question.
It wasn't a big deal. We're going to get to the information.
Okay.
Yep.
But other people are making it out like it's this big hateful thing. It's just a question on what the policy is.
Sure.
And that's all it is.
Yep.
And depending on what the answer is, is what my next statement will be. So, I look forward to your email.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Tiffany?
Thank you. Tiffany Gagnon, 17 Buckingham Drive. I didn't have anything planned, but I just want to respond to a couple of things. The question about the bathrooms isn't hateful, it's the fact that it was asked immediately after a trans student went on about how difficult it was. That is what makes it hateful, not the question itself. To the speaker before that who wants students to learn real-world skills, totally agree. Real-world skills include working in a world full of diversity. How to be a good friend, how to be a good friend to a queer student or someone who is different than you. Agreed, these are fantastic skills to learn. And then to one of the original speakers who felt like he didn't intentionally hurt anyone, I want to remind folks that impact outweighs intention. If you didn't intend to hurt someone, but someone is hurt, that impact outweighs what you meant. No one on earth knows who someone is better than themselves, and children know who they are in many ways at a young age, and as they're figuring out more complex levels of themselves in any capacity, they need support. I'm a queer woman, and I knew that at four years old. I was raised by a public school teacher and a far-right conspiracy theorist. It was a very fun household. I've heard it all, and that's why I care so deeply about supporting students when I hear these dangerous misunderstandings and false beliefs. They have a truly harmful impact, and years of therapy coming out of a household like that is very expensive. Students need two things to learn effectively, because that is what public schools are here to do. They are here to teach children. And in order for children to learn, they need to feel safe and they need to feel seen. And that is why it's important to see students for who they are and to make them feel safe in that identity, whatever it is.
Thank you.
Dawn Anderson, seven, Danbury Court, Londonderry. I'd just like to say, sorry. So, I'd like to say that, just a reminder, thank you for those who have concerns over our student body, but I'd like to remind you, this is about us, and this is about all of the grades going up to it. So, we've got Musso, South School, like all the elementary. I just want to remind you that this isn't about your beliefs, it's about the children. And the school board can only, the school itself can only do so much. And I've been very fortunate to have experienced the school system and be able to be supported and be able to go to counselor meetings and having that door always open. I just wanted to have that reminder that you are here for us, and if you're going to speak, I'd really like it to be more towards the student body and what is feasible for administration and what the school board can do for us, essentially. I know I'm repeating myself a little bit. I do appreciate the concerns, and I just hope that we can resolve some of these things, but at the same time, we're being raised through a different generation with different problems, and sometimes we have to figure it out on our own. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Holly Edmonds, 43 seasons, Londonderry. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm going to speak. I and my kids accept all types. You can be a cat, a dog, however you identify is fine with us. I think what is pushed on the kids so much by other kids, not by the parents telling the kids, you know, persuading them how they should act or what they should be or how they should identify, the, and again, you can be, I support whatever you are. When those kids, transgenders, gays, lesbians, come into the school and, you know, ask other kids, my kids included, how do you identify? My kids are a little blunt, you know, they will say what body part they have, and that's how they identify. These kids then pick on the kids that identify as straight. You know, you're different, you're weird. My kids will defend themselves and say comments that they probably shouldn't say, but they're going to defend themselves, saying that, you know, it doesn't matter how, you identify as trans, fine, I identify as a boy. That person then ridicules my son. My son speaks freely, and then now he gets in trouble with the school for saying things. Again, we accept all types. If you want to be what you want to be, more power to you, and we support you. However, I think it's the kids that taunt and, you know, ask other kids how to identify constantly. Now, it's affecting their school, it's affecting their studies, it's being pushed so much in the schools. Again, I don't care how you identify, just stop. These kids need to be taught that, again, their words and actions have consequences. Stop pushing it and making other kids that don't identify as what they are maybe felt to be different or looked down upon. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close, public comment?
Jonathan Esposito, five, Shelley Drive in Londonderry. I did wish to briefly address the school board regarding the accidental trigger of the response system in the Alice Drill incident that occurred. I understand that accidents happen or that unintended, you know, tests, whatever, may have occurred in the system to set this off, but I specifically raised this concern. I'm about to graduate leadership Londonderry, and we had a rather extensive portion with the school district during the high school. Mr. Black gave a very nice presentation, as did Mr. Parent. And when they were going through the portion that a lockdown at one school could in fact trigger a lockdown reaction at another school, put the staff into, you know, a protective mode for the students, I said, what in fact, you know, what is there to prevent that from occurring in the event of tests or accidents? Because it is unfortunate that we live in a post-9/11 world, and that physical security of our school district is a very real concern. However, just like during COVID, we suffered lockdown fatigue. There is such a thing as physical security fatigue going through these drills, dealing with these measures. It affects the staff, it affects the students, it raises the general anxiety level. I recall being on a call with Mr. Black, probably a year and a half ago now, in which a parent had raised, you know, possibly putting metal detectors at the schools. And Mr. Black had said, you know, as you start to increase physical security measures and have more visible drills, it does change the culture of a school district and often for the negatives. So, I understand that these Alice Drills, I understand that these physical protective systems are necessary to keep our students and our staff safe. However, if something was accidentally triggered, there really needs to be extensive retraining to ensure that this does not occur again, because we can't, you know, I have children in the district, I have three of them in the district, and they should not have excessive fatigue from the physical security response of going through extra drills and responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close, public comment? Thank you for everyone coming up and participating in public comment. Public comment is closed for this evening. Thank you. And we'll move on to committee reports. Our student council, got an update?
Just like to say thank you for the past year. We've got some stuff planned for the fall, and so I'm excited to get started with more school spirit. We had our executive board meeting earlier today and got to hear some of the ideas from different members and our student, our class officers. I'm excited to be working with them and with you guys for our next school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll go to school board liaisons. I'll start to my left this time. Kevin?
There are no new updates from the committees, other than there's next PTA, next and last PTA meeting for North School is tomorrow night.
The Budget Committee had Lisa attend their most recent meeting to discuss the budget process, the timeline, and the resources that are available to the committee, but other than that, there were no other material updates.
Updates? I don't have any updates.
And I'll just update, the town council meeting last night, there is a twin state, I think it's called, transmission line, starting to inquire about upgrading transmission lines as a big project. So, I would, as community members, stay tuned for that and any information you may need. It's quite an extensive project over the, they'll be reaching out to the public over the next two years. They said it could take up to two, three years for permitting, but it's quite extensive and stay tuned for that if it's in your area of Londonderry. And that's all I have on that part of it. And we'll move into 7.1 Moose Hill Building Committee in Charge. We spoke about this last week, two weeks ago now, on a charge for the Moose Hill Building Committee. I know the superintendent had sent us some information regarding some of the requirements, and we had spoke in some fashion of coming up with a policy. Some of the wording that has been forwarded, I think, works in most cases. I just had a couple of concerns, but I'd like to read what I have, and then anyone else, if you want to chime in or if you had something that's different. Let's see if we can come up with the right charge here, moving forward to get some higher construction manager and put a building committee together. The charge would read, "The charge of Moose Hill Building Committee will be to comply with all stipulations within the policy B C F A and up to and including advising both the school board and kindergarten committee on both cost-effective plans for Phase 1A and B and Phase 2 of Moose Hill School that also meet the educational needs of Phase 1A and B and Phase 2." And I'm going to ask Dan for some input, too, if it could be, for my reasoning on, I know it came up at the last meeting as Phase 1A and B basically have to go together, is kind of what Mark said from Trident and group, is basically what he stated at the meeting. My concern to get, to make sure the building committee gets us pricing on the back wing as well as the additional space for office space, multipurpose for the other needs of the kindergarten, is to, so we can break it out in the three segments. Yes, it may go with the Phase 1A B as a warrant article moving forward, depending on what happens between now and January, but I'd like to show the community that, because I would sure hate to get nothing. We really need space, so I'd like to see it broken out. I'd like the building committee's input on that, just to kind of show it in three phases or three sections broken out, and then that'll give the board and the community a good concept. Because if you remember, we went to, it's always been Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 2 was all the extra space where the portables are, multipurpose and classrooms. And Sandra and your presentation and the whole committee was eye-opening to the other space that really wasn't discussed a year ago, and it came out. So, this is a lot of new information. So, I think showing the cost difference in the three phases rather than Phase 1A 2 as a complete package and Phase 2, which would be full-day kindergarten, will help the community digest and more explanation and show the cost difference to those. That's why I broke it up into the 1A B for the building committee and the charge. So, I don't know, Dan, if you have anything to add to that or?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, you know, the main point of the next phase is to share the conceptual plans with a cost estimator or a general, sorry, whatever it's called.
Construction manager.
Yeah. To get really good costs. However we want to break it out is fine. I think that's what we want to look at, you know?
I just wanted to explain it, so I'm not trying to, I just think it gives the community, because we had a number at CIP last year, we're going to have a different number this year.
Yeah.
Because of the space needs and other areas that really weren't approached a year and a half ago when the kindergarten committee started. So, I'd like to be able to show the community the reasoning for this and what the cost is.
Sure.
But then that'll be up to the kindergarten committee to push it in the community and explain all this with their forums and that moving forward.
Sure.
I just wanted to change a little bit from what Mark from Trident said at the, what he had said at the meeting.
Sure.
And that's why I kind of just worded it a little different than that. So, any input from, just any questions on colleagues?
It did come off very much so that 1A and 1B were necessary to both.
I just wanted to explain it, so I'm not trying to, I just think gives the community, because we had a number at CIP last year, we're going to have a different number this year.
Yeah.
Because of the space needs and other areas that really weren't approached a year and a half ago when the kindergarten committee started. So, I'd like to be able to show the community the reasoning for this and what the cost is.
Sure.
But then that'll be up to the kindergarten committee to push it in the community and explain all this with their forums and that moving forward.
Sure.
I just wanted to change a little bit from what Mark from Trident said at the, what he had said at the meeting.
Sure.
And that's why I kind of just worded it a little different than, than that. So, any input from, just any questions on colleagues?
It did come off very much so that One A and One B were necessary to both occur from what Mark's explanation was. So, Dan, is that your interpretation too?
Yeah, I mean, so yeah, again, going back to what Bob was saying, there's been a huge evolution. And if you go back to even like five years ago.
Right.
Like, there's a schematic of what we thought Moose Hill addition would be like five years ago. So, there's this big evolution of what's gone on and what's really what's gone on is we had the time and the space to really think through what the educational needs are, where the enrollment's at, where the special ed programming is at, and I think that came together in a much more robust way over the last six months that we just never put the time in earlier, you know? So, that, it's just a level of detail that we never went into. I think when the master planning first came out, you know, we had conversations about six buildings and Moose Hill was just one of them. We never really delved deeply into one building. Over the last year, we did, so that's why you have a lot more detail than the past, if that makes sense.
That's your question, Kevin? You guys good? So, want me to read it one more time and I'll ask for a motion if there's no further discussion? All right, let me read it. The charge of the Moose Hill Building Committee will be to comply with all stipulations within policy B C F A up to and including advising both the school board and kindergarten committee on both cost-effective plans for Phase One A and B and Phase Two of the Moose Hill School that also meet the educational needs of Phase One A and B and Phase Two. Could I have a motion for, to approve this charge for the kindergarten committee, building committee?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. And now we're going to, we spoke about the, I think in the packet, everybody got a copy. Kevin worked with, actually put this together for the prior meeting and then was able to work with Amity, is that correct, Kevin? And fine-tuned the committee application and that so we could post this through the committee, the communication committee and probably put it in the newspaper to start advertising for building trade professionals, superintendents, foremen's, construction managers locally in town. My thought was is maybe a five-person board with two alternates if we get that many applicants. Just in case somebody gets pulled away, we still have that fifth and that. And they would follow as we're working on our policies here a little bit later, but they would follow the same school board rules with their meetings and be publicized and that. They would elect the chair between them, the vice chair and the secretary. So, the copy is here. I don't know if anyone had any comments on the application or if everybody was good with it. You're good?
Oh, it's great.
Good?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to add weekends to it or is it strictly no? If people have some available on Saturdays, Sundays? I know we have every day, I just don't know if we want to add every day of the week. I don't know.
And maybe add weekends just, just in case?
Possibly, yeah. Yeah.
What do everybody think? You okay with that?
Yeah, to be thorough.
Okay. So, just add another box?
Yeah.
And put weekends. Okay. Okay. So, if everybody is okay with that and these applications would come to the school board, then we can, as soon as we gather the information, we can bring it up if we have enough applications at our next meeting. If not, it would go to the following meeting in July to selecting, we want to get this committee going as soon as possible because they've got a lot of work to do between now and budget season and January. So, I would say if we can get this application, just adding weekends to it, get it out on the press tomorrow.
Yep. So, just to review, building trade professionals, construction managers, superintendents, want to make sure I capture it all?
Yep, looking for professionals in the building trades or the building world.
Okay.
Would be great to help with the building committee of putting pricing together for, you know, you can put some narrative together for what is needed.
So, who's collecting the responses?
They're going to come to us, to the school board, direct it to our email. And we will review them and bring the packet with us to the next meeting. If we have enough, we can, we can discuss it then and go through them. If we feel as though we need to bring some into interview because we have too many, we can make that decision. What do you think of that?
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if it's coming into one email address, formulating Google forms.
We could do that. I'm, I'm.
I just didn't know who was collecting them and putting them into a spreadsheet.
It would be like a Google form with a spreadsheet that you guys could all see.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, would you guys be sending it to us?
You, you all would just have the access to see the backend of all the things coming in.
So, it'll be shared with us or we are the owner access?
I guess we'll have to figure that out. It might be easier if Amity's the owner?
Yeah.
So, right now Kevin's the owner.
Oh, Kevin's the owner.
Kevin and I are co-collaborators.
There we go.
Okay.
Yep, so we're good.
You'll make it happen?
Yeah, we'll share it.
All right.
What do you want me to put for the official name of the committee? They're checking.
Official would be Moose Hill Building Committee.
We can push it out on the blog very soon.
Yep.
Getting the newspapers, just be a little bit more time.
Yep, yeah, whatever we can, social media-wise, I think that'll get a good jumpstart into the community and then the newspaper would be great. So, I guess I, if you want me, I can make a motion for a five-person board with two alternates so we can, so I'll make a motion to, that we make a selection of five members, voting members of the Moose Hill Building Committee with two alternates.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you.
One quick question. Do you guys have a sense yet of how you want this committee to interact with the kindergarten committee?
I, you want me to hit on it a little bit?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, their meetings are going to be open meetings too, but I think the chair of the committee should be in touch with, I believe Sandra's the chair of the kindergarten so they can do direct communications, invite the committee to the meetings they need them at.
Okay.
And vice versa, if they need to do their meeting. So, I think that those two can communicate and post the meetings.
Okay.
And that way, all the information, because Sandra's going to be the key factor of getting them most of that information with, with the kindergarten committee that's in place now.
Okay.
And that, so I would say, let's do that. The chair of the committee will probably reach out to the chair of that committee and, of the kindergarten committee and set up the meetings and when, when they need them, when they don't and information meetings. I'm sure they'll have a few of those. Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Okay. All set? Is that all you need on that, Dan?
Yep.
That's great. Okay. All right. Yeah, we'll go to 7.2. First reading to amend policy B D D C. Okay. I wrote this up, I spoke about it probably a month ago and you can see in red, I added, I changed board chairman to chairperson. And then I added that sentence down between the two paragraphs that no board member shall be refused an agenda item or items unless the item has been deliberated and voted on in the past six months and there is no new information pertaining to the topic. I didn't know on the timeline, but I just felt as though, you know, if somebody keeps bringing it and trying to get board members, it could go on forever. So, I just put kind of six months. I don't know what everybody thinks of that. I felt as though there should be a time for that and if anyone's got any opinions, I just, what had happened here is a couple of times in the past, you know, I was denied agenda items and I don't ever want a sitting board member that's been elected by the community to be refused an agenda item. You're elected by the, by the community. It should go on the agenda. If the majority of the board at that point doesn't want to discuss it, then it can be voted down because there's no need to talk about it. So, that's how a board member should be denied, any topic not to be discussed if the majority of the board. It should never be, and this changes that to now they're able to do that for future boards coming in and that. So, that's why I'm looking to make this change. Any questions? All right, with the, let me get back to the agenda here. So, if I could have a motion to accept the first reading to amend policy B D D C, agenda preparation and decimation.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. All right. B C E, second reading of B C E. This one, we didn't really, I don't think we had any, any changes. Has anyone, we had looked at this. I think this one was okay. I know we had some word changes coming up in B C F. If there's no changes, I'll make a motion. Good. Could I have a motion to approve second reading to amend policy B C E? Board committees, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. And second reading of B C F. And this is the establishing temporary advisory slash ad hoc committee school board. Some have been changed. Everything in red would be new.
What we did is we tried to capture everything that was discussed about last time.
Correct.
You know, we tried to make some of the changes and then this policy is going to the communications committee next week too, to kind of get their input.
Yep. Thank you. Any questions on B C F?
I don't know if we want to change the D O to district office. I know you're saying we were changing D Os into the district office, so.
Yeah.
I know there's one there, we might want to just change that.
Change that one, yeah.
We can fix them all.
Any other changes? All good? All right. Can I have a motion to approve second reading to amend policy B C F, establishing temporary advisory with that one change, please?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. And B C F E, this is to rescind because we combined the ad hoc with the other policy. So, if I could have a motion to approve second reading to rescind policy B C F E, ad hoc committees, please?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. All right. Superintendent's report, 8.1 Student Cell Phone Use and Discussion, please.
Yeah, I got the sense that the school board just wanted to talk a bit about, around cell phones. You know, our entire middle school and high school will be a one-to-one environment next year. I know they've been talking about it internally about what that means in terms of, you know, kind of changing practices. So, I think we're just going to have a conversation and William, Jason, Rick might jump in too and we'll kind of see where you guys want to go with it.
Okay. Let's start.
Sure. So, I know I reached out to you, Dan, over the weekend just for some updated information in the policy or handbook and there's not much in there. As a administrator, school administrator myself, phones take up a big chunk of my day, every day, especially at the middle school level. So, I know it's, it's happening at every school level here. I would like to see some more procedures in place or in the handbook outlined as to more formal procedures. If phones are out now that we're one-to-one, I don't see why there's any reason for cell phones or students to be using cell phones. I know in the past, recently, you know, teachers have asked students to download apps or take their phones out in, in class and I think that just causes a disruption, disruption even if they're on it for educational purposes. I think a notification pops up or something pops up on their phone that they're just, their minds are not formed yet, that they're just thinking onto that. So, it's a big part of their life, cell phones, I know, but I think we need to get a little more strict in the district as to what we're allowing in school. And even, I mean, I've even seen, I, my kids have social media, I check their, their social media apps frequently. I see a lot of other students posting TikToks, Snapchats, everything in school of other kids and teachers. And again, privacy and everything like that, I think it's a little bit out of control and I don't, I even see it with my daughter with her elementary that they're posting TikToks of the elementary classroom. So, I think it's a problem. I think we need to get a little more strict and have more procedures in place as to what we're going to do. And I know even for, for staff members, I know they've been using cell phones or allowing cell phones for educational use for the past few years that what are we going to expect out of staff members now? How are we going to address it when we see it? Is it going to be cell phones away and off at all times? You know, do we take it away? Do parents pick it up? And I think we'll need the follow-through and buy-in from all the staff members and everyone will need to be on board with that because otherwise it's not going to work. And I think just the disruption it causes that I see on a day-to-day basis is just, I think a lot of parents aren't aware of the dealings with, that teachers and administrators have to deal with. And I also don't know if the communications committee can look into creating an informational document for parents about screen time and how to shut off certain apps during school day hours, just simple things like that, that I've spoken to parents about that they had no idea, like shut off apps between six and three or whatever, just things that you can shut off so kids aren't even tempted to look at it or open it or get a notification. So, I don't know if that's something the communication committee can look into, producing a handy one-page document that can kind of go through and teach parents how to do that. So, I don't, I don't know. I think maybe over the next couple months or over the summer that we have more strict procedures in place for the schools on cellphone use. I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I wanted to speak on it a little bit as well. It just seems like a very opportune time since we just passed to have all, at least grade six through 12 to have the one-to-ones. And part of the argument I heard before of allowing cellphone use, or at least at the teacher's discretion, was because there were instances where it would be convenient for the kids to be able to look things up for projects, whatever is going on in the classroom. Having those Chromebooks for each of the individual kids now negates that need. And I think it leaves it that now the phones being available to them would cause more potential harm than good. It's, I mean, spoken to a couple teachers on this, spoken to a couple surrounding district board members about it and the distraction it creates from kids texting, from kids even just leaning down, looking at their phones. I think, I think it needs to be an official policy as opposed to just guidelines that we have, like you mentioned, that our handbook doesn't really even touch on it. So, I, and some of the policies that I've read and I showed you guys the Wyndham School District policy, it, even in the middle school and high school allows for teacher discretion. I, I think even for the teacher's sake, taking that off their plate as even an option is better for all. So, that even if kids are trying to persuade them or if we have an instance where we have substitute teachers that may be more apt to just say, okay, go ahead, finish with our lesson for the day, use the phone. I'd rather that not be an option. I just think cutting it off at this time where the one-to-ones are coming in, it's a good time just to cut that out so that we can take out that distraction. I know that there's going to be a lot of, I mean, going into the summer, we're going to have to figure out the language in this, going, as we approach the new school year. I know one of the concerns that parents will have will be from a security standpoint. There's nothing saying that the kids aren't going to have the phones with them in their bags. In the case, some, some emergency happens, they'll have access to go get them. But I think it's important that we have a strict policy in place on paper that all of the staff needs to follow. So, I think, I mean, this is obviously the start of the discussion, but I think ironing out those details over the next couple of months heading into new school year has been a wonderful thing for us to do.
Just a quick question about phones. There are classroom phones in every classroom, correct? High school, middle school, elementary school.
Are you referring to like landlines?
Every classroom, landlines. If there was ever an emergency, every classroom has one, right? Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said there. I saw the only viable use case for having a phone in the classroom being for that information lookup. With the one-to-one, I don't see a particular need for a student to have access to the phone during a classroom or to at least not have it put away in the bag. It is, I think, having access to it literally just is, it's asking for distractions to happen. You know, and I've heard the argument going back both about, you know, emergencies and being able to contact. We have the in-room phones and we also have, as we've always done, if something needs to come in, it funnels through the office. The office gets in contact with the teacher if it's a true emergency and students pulled out. And that avenue is always going to be there. So I really don't see any need for a student to have access to a cell phone during the school day outside of putting it in their bag and putting it away. So, you know, I think it does just lead to things like social media issues coming up. You know, filming of students, inverted pictures of students, all those types of issues that can occur with it are negated if we just say, they're away, they're in the bag, that's it.
Amanda?
I agree with pretty much everything everyone said. And I also really like how this Wyndham policy included the recording devices piece. I'd really like to see that get done before the start of the next school year. And that's just as important in terms of the personal privacy, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I'll just hit that, you know, as everybody stated, it's a huge distraction. You know, a phone is a distraction in my life at work. I have to have it, you know, for contacts and information. But that's beside, we, we want these students to be the best. We want to be able to give them the best education. And we want to take every distraction away that we possibly can. And I think this is a good start and to get them more focused. We're, we're able to get the voters to help us out and get the one-to-one as, as Tim and Kevin said. And, you know, K through 12, so that helps. So let's, let's take it to the next level on education and keep those grades increasing month after month. So that's where I'm at. But love to hear from you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I'll turn it over to Jay, Rick and William. But, you know, I think when you don't have a policy and you put a new policy in place, you know, let's take the dress code policy. It took us like six months to get there. So I would advise at this point in time, you do want to engage your staff. You do want to make them part of this process if you want them to comply, if you want them to figure these things out. So I think a procedure is probably where you want to start and let, let the middle school and high school, I mean, elementary, I think there's less of a problem, but it's still there. Let them think about it and come back to you all with procedures and then we can go from there. But I want to give you guys the ability to jump in too.
You want us to start?
I'll be happy to, yeah. So, you know, Sarah, I agree, we spend a lot of time with phones in middle school. One of the things I think that is important to consider, and I'll go through a few notes here, is that, you know, cell phones are not owned by kids. They're owned by parents. And most kids that have one have the permission of their parents to have it. So I think that it does require a conversation. There are a lot of parents that are very accustomed to getting in touch with their children after school. There are a lot of parents that are accustomed, and kids are accustomed to getting in touch with their parents for a lot of reasons throughout the course of the school day. In middle school in particular, let me point out just a few things that we did in the last couple, last couple of years that have worked very successful. The first one was this year in March, the parents in middle school will remember this, but we instituted a no-phone policy in the gym and in the locker rooms. We were experiencing problems in the locker rooms. Kids were bringing their phones. There's no reason to bring a phone to a PE class. Can't keep in your pocket, it's hard, you know, kids are active. We took about a month or so, we informed parents that, you know, kids weren't going to have their phones during PE. They could not have their phones at all in the locker room for privacy purposes. We found that all of our parents agreed. It went into place, so we kind of eliminated that area. And I think safely from that point on, from March until where we are now, I can safely say that kids don't bring their phones to PE or locker rooms, which is good. We're not as in control after school. Kids get ready for practice, they have their phones in their book bags. I'm sure they go in there, but there are clear indicators that if kids do have a phone out, that there's, you know, consequences for that. But locker rooms are off limits for any purpose, but we found that to be successful. Last year, we instituted no cell phones at any social events or dances. This was also very well received by parents. We did a lot of groundwork with that because that was going to be new for kids. They're usually showing up to an event and have their phone and taking it out. But dances and social events in the middle school are made to be social, face-to-face interaction. We started last year with the eighth grade dance. It was very successful. Prior to the dance, we gave kids a chance to show up a half an hour early. They had their phones, they took their pictures outside. Once they entered the building, all the kids turned over their phone. And I think for the kids themselves, they probably were relieved. They didn't have to worry about anybody taking their picture, their video, and/or having to check their phone throughout the course of the time. And most parents were very appreciative of that. So those are two areas that we think were very successful and really alienating phones. Our staff is asking for some guidelines for the administrative team. We are going to do that this summer, some work with that. We have a conflict a little bit in middle school where the kids should have their phone on them, pockets, yoga pant pockets, whatever the case may be. We require kids to keep them in their book bags. This becomes some of an argument at times with kids because they do sneak it into their pockets and their sweatshirt pockets. As you know, we're doing headphones and music and so forth. But for the most part, if we find them in non-compliance of that, then they turn it over and so, and so forth. And there's consequences there. But staff is asking for consistency, real consistent policy of procedures on them. So we'll be looking at that this summer. So we'll be kind of rolling those out at least to start the school year. What I find is, at least with electronic devices, cell phones and so forth, and just to allude to, policies are really good, but they do get very restrictive. And that, there's no gray area, which can be very useful in middle school, but there are gray areas that come about. Some of the other things that come up in middle school that has been part of the learning process where phones have been a very successful part, our kids do use them in classes to make short video clips, different, different activities, particularly in foreign language and some of the languages and some of the other classes. This has worked well. Kids who've had them, they've worked in groups, they manipulate their phones very well. So when they take short video clips and use for projects, it is a positive experience. We haven't seen any misuse of them during that time. But I do know teachers, especially those in one of our eighth grade computer classes and several others, did voice that this was something they still wanted kids to be able to access. But again, it's something that can be discussed and talked about. And as Dan alluded to, it'd be good to hear from some of the teachers who use them in that manner. But that's one of the things that came up as far as in regards to restrictive use. The last thing just before, I'm sure Jason wants to have a few things too. Where we find the most challenges are texting. And this is true. Kids can text actually from in their pocket. I don't think they can even see the keys and they still can do it. They're very talented with that. But they do text during the day. Lunchrooms, bathrooms, all susceptible areas, okay, where texting goes on. I know there's parents in here, so we'll just throw this out. There's lots of parents that student text, okay? We live in a busy world, I understand, and parents need to find out where their kids are after school. And sometimes they leave the house and they're busy and they got practice and they don't know. And they text their kids. You know, some kids answer, some kids wait. It puts kids in an awkward position. We've talked to parents about this, so it's no surprise. But it puts them in a weird spot because they don't know whether they should answer or not right away. And then also texting parents during the school day is still an issue at middle school. So putting restrictive use on that, I'm not sure if you see the same thing, would inhibit some parents, I'm thinking, that they don't have access to their kids. But again, we can, I think, hearing from parents and teachers on that as well. And lastly, the most vulnerable spot, school buses. It is the most vulnerable spot without a doubt. We hear it all the time. These are probably the most challenging cases. Kids are taking videos, they take videos of kids, they take videos, Snapchats and so forth. They are in buses. It's, it's hard to maintain. Kids are on there, they're on the bus, there's one driver. We want the drivers driving bus and kids are safe. It is very susceptible. So, you know, if you're looking at policies and rules, they need to expand all the way probably onto buses as well to help transportation and drivers manage that as well. Because we do deal with a lot of those recourses. So that's just a little synopsis of where the middle school is. Some goods, some things that we're looking at, some applicable things, so.
Great.
So the high school's taken a bit different approach. I just want to read a section. We use a procedure. Each year, we inform our families and our students in the welcome back and in orientations that obviously we recognize that with upgrades in technology, the one-to-one laptop initiative that now applies to our freshmen, sophomores and juniors and will soon be for our four classes. And obviously it's helped us improve on the learning environment. With increased Wi-Fi across the district, it's much easier and faster to communicate. We recognize that, we want to give our students autonomy. That's our current reality, keeping in mind that these are generally primarily 15 to 18-year-old young men and women. So as such, we want to treat them as young adults and we feel they're responsible enough to handle that and we sort of designate areas. So we've, we've said students can use cell phones with teacher permission for educational purposes, as William alluded to, or in non-academic areas for personal use. So they have a 47-minute lunch period in this cafeteria. A lot of them are involved in clubs and activities. They rely on that because they have group chats that they're, that they're checking. Between classes, they might be checking, you know, a text they receive or a message they receive. But we've asked for the support and help of our, our teaching staff, our, our parents, right? If, we ask if our parents want to contact their student, they should be contacting the house office. They should be going through the house office to deliver any news to, to their child so that we can support that and, and, and get that information to them. We've also laid out our expectation that we discourage the use of the devices for calls, texting, emailing in classrooms. That's a distraction to the educational process throughout the day. So there are areas where they're more social. In fact, I'm, we're in the midst of senior week right now. At the Red Sox game, the kids love that they're taking pictures right at, at Fenway Park. We're at Moose Hill today. They met with their teachers, they went outside, they rang the bell. That was on video because that's just a natural thing for them to take out. So we've sort of struck a compromise with them about appropriate designated areas for its use. But I agree that in, in the classroom particularly, where we're going to be one-on-one fully, one-to-one fully, you know, that, that's the best tool to use there. There's really no need for, for a phone. As far as our policy goes, the only real policy language we have is in our discipline policy. It's under the level two, which is a level that any behaviors that disrupt, you know, the learning environment. And one of the offenses is the use of electronics in an unauthorized area. So teachers can write up students or we can address that. The student's given due process and would talk to an assistant principal. And if it's unmodified, it leads to, you know, Saturday detention or an in-school suspension or something like that. So that's the current reality at the high school. Rick has some thoughts on what that might look like in the future and ways to go about addressing this issue.
Thank you, Jason. So the theme for me, that, you know, I've had the, the good fortune of being able to be here, here and there, is part of this transition. I really appreciated that. And one of the themes that's come up, and I think it's true of all schools, I think it's you, the board is addressing it through the desire for some increased controls around things like cell phones is consistency. So, you know, in terms of, you can have whatever policy we want or procedure we want, it's really going to come down to how it's enforced and if it's consistently enforced. Whether it's kind of a loose policy or super strict, it all comes down to how it's enforced. And I think to speak, speaking to Superintendent Black's point, you know, I would love the opportunity. And I've already kind of started knowing that this is already coming up in the Technology Committee that I've sat on, sat in on. And I met, I spoke to students today during their executive board meeting saying, this is an issue, it's coming. I would love the opportunity to address that with a, a school-based committee over the summer before, as we're putting the handbook together, to put forth some language. Because I would agree, there should be something in the handbook that we could perhaps, once we come together and maybe work in collaboration with a middle school, knowing there'll be differences between the ages, to bring forward something to present as part of the handbook process just for your information to show what, what we would like to do as a school and a community. I think we need teacher buy-in as part, in order to be consistent. We need, they're on the front lines of enforcing those rules. There's a whole bunch of unintended consequences that can come in place when we start banning things like cell phones. Believe me, I wish they never existed. I don't know, I wish I could throw mine away. I mean, there's been many times I wish I didn't have a phone. And we just don't live in that world anymore. You know, parents are constantly, and I'm guilty of this, if you, students at the high school level in particular, plans change. Mom and dad are working and we're trying to get a hold and make plans. You're getting a ride with so on, so on. So those are the practical uses, and I know you're not speaking necessarily to those. I would agree, the distractions in the classroom are problematic. But I do believe if you, especially the student body like we have here at the high school, that if we let them know that this is a concern and this is how we want to deal with it and we come up with a plan and then we all agree, and as an administration, that we're going to enforce this plan consistently and work towards doing that, that we would have a good result. And if it didn't work, then we would need to do something different because we're ultimately accountable for, for enforcing these things.
If I can just add, I just want to add one more thing because I remember Sarah's point. And Jason said the same thing. As we implement one-to-one devices, we do have and do have teachers who do often refer to kids downloading apps on their phone and so forth. I do see all of that kind of going away, no doubt. The one-to-one will clarify some of those needs where kids have used phones for different, different variety of reasons that I think could be limited without a doubt with one-to-one devices, so.
So if you kind of weave everything together, I mean, I think, I think we all see, this is a good opportunity.
Yep.
I think we all see the need to pull back to Rick's point. I've got two right here. You know, and I think we should definitely get to a place where there not being a distraction anymore. I think if you give William and Rick kind of the green light to think through the procedures, at least initially, of what that might look like over the summer, we'll, we'll be in a better place. Because I, I don't want a policy to backfire because I think that that, that could be the, that could be the unintended consequence. Because to get anything done right, I think Rick was alluding to it, you got to bring the teachers in, you got to get them all on the same page and kind of feel good about where we're going to then convince the kids to behave differently. And obviously, cell phones are everywhere. They're ubiquitous and I think we want it to go well. So I think if we can have a little time to think about these things, come, come back and present to the school board, then we can figure out a way to go forward. Is that a good way to summarize?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Obviously, discussion.
Sure.
I agree with everything you guys said. Something I just wanted to add, and I understand that the rules are going to be a little bit different across the different developmental levels. But I think when you're working together on it and when you're working with staff, there are some expectations that can be consistent across buildings and that those should be made clear and also visually posted. And then, of course, in line with MTSS. And then whatever you feel is appropriate in terms of extra privileges and things like that, of course. But I think even to, we want to make sure that we keep things across buildings. That way, the transitions are easier for, for staff.
Sure.
And when you're setting up those expectations, might be a good time to involve your teams and get their feedback. So they're part of the process. Just my two cents.
Great point. Sarah, anything?
No, no, I think that sounds good. I do think more information needs to be in the handbook as far as guidelines. I think we need to take a focus on that and really lay out the procedures. But I think that all sounds good. Just taking a deep look at it over the summer, maybe coming back at, at end of July or maybe with some things that you guys have worked on. Because hopefully this would start, you know, fresh the new school year. You don't want to wait too long. So, I don't know, maybe July, are we looking at this again and with some updates?
Yeah, our meeting's July 18th, so is our, we only have one meeting that month. But if we had to call another meeting maybe the end of July or something, in case we had to, or early August is our next meeting. Would that be in time for the handbook? When's that get published?
Yeah, I, I think it's a matter of just us taking time just to meet, talk, talk through. I think we have a good, good insight of what we want to see. And it can be progressive, six through 12, no doubt. I think that's a really good.
We'll see where you are in July, right? And then if we got to go a little further into the early August to the next meeting, we can tidy it, tighten things up. Does that work?
Yeah, the, the handbooks are published in late August before the start of the school year. So they just sort of set the ground rules for student expectations.
Yeah, I just like, I like the idea of collecting more information always, so, yeah.
Yep. Good.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, Dan May, enrollment?
Yeah, so I include the enrollment report. If you go to the second page, we are at 4,120 kids, which is exactly where we were at the end of September. But you can see on that page there's an ebb and flow throughout the year. That's very normal. Families come and go. You know, so I think if I connect this back to the budget season, we've You know, so I think if, if I connect this back to the budget season, we've seen, you know, much more stable enrollment over the last couple of years, that's kind of be the theme where we're at. You know, so I think that's, you know, and we'll, we'll update this again in the summer and then in the fall as we build up to the next school year. But I do want to connect this back to kind of some of the questions on the kindergarten committee last time, we were asking about enrollment, where we were going. Lisa McKee did a great job of finding this 2017 enrollment study that, that we had done, kind of projecting it. What's fascinating, if you look through it, the number where we're at now is actually pretty much where they said we would be, at least in the lower end, so that, that was good. But in terms of their methodology, one of the things that I think would be good for us to get our heads around is building and where buildings going in this community. You know, so they, they based their analysis kind of on births and move in and outs, but there does seem to be a lot of potential for more building and culinary. So I know one of the projects I think Lisa and I have over the summer is talking to the planning board more, talking to the planning department, and kind of really understand what's coming, or if anything is coming, I don't know. You know, I mean, I've seen nothing but stability for five years, but if things are going to change, I think we want to know that and answer those questions better. So stability right now, but I think it's, it's good for us to kind of do, do more of a study and work with the town to really understand where they think enrollment and population's going to.
Dan, I think that's a great idea, it actually came up, one concern, community member last night at the council meeting, there's upwards of 800 to 1,000 units on the docket right now over the next two to three years, spread out all over. But as we have spoken as a board and, and district, that with all these master plan things, and we're, you know, we, I think we'll dive into that a little bit with Moose Hill, is where do we go if we need two, three more classrooms? Because you're only projected out for, I think, 300 students max, what if we need 330? So I think that could be part of the planning process at the same time. But that is a big concern of all of us on the board and, and I know districts, so I think more time with the town manager, you know, mapping this out and following planning board, I think is a great idea. Lisa and, and Dan, stay on top of that, just keep us updated, because that will change our, what we do in certain areas of town, and we got to be on top of it, because if it's coming in three to five years, you know, we've got to look at our building situation and that, and I know they have a ratio, which I thought was kind of weird, is, you know, I think it was like .67 per two or three-bedroom home now, and.
Zero six seven.
Zero six seven, sorry. And that, so I just want to make sure we're, we're in sequence with the, with the town and stay in tune with them, so, great. Appreciate it. Any questions for Dan? All right, thank you, Dan. Thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
And just 8.3, recommendation on some other policies due to some of the changes we made?
Yep. So we, you know, there's three more policies to talk about, you know, committees. There's BCFA, BCFB, I'd recommend they stay as-is unless a school board wants changes to it. I think they're pretty comprehensive, you know, you've got a school building committee, and then the purchasing of land. Obviously, updates could be made down the line if you all want to, so I'd look at them, but they, they seem to be pretty comprehensive and, and, and work well. BCFD is the Committee to School Board Communications, I was going to bring that one up to the communications committee next week too. We could keep this as a standalone one, or I was also thinking you could roll it into BCF if you wanted to, you know, so it's just another one to think about. I think everything in there is fine, there's nothing wrong with it, it could just stay as-is, or if you wanted to condense some of your policies, we certainly could, but I just want to make sure you guys were aware of these three as we're making the changes to the other three, four.
Yeah, and, and I know in this building committee, it talks in some areas of a clerk of the works and that, which I think we are covered, having Trident Group as our OPM, we're already paying a fee for them to manage and requisitions and legwork, so I think that could be, you know, we can alternate that just with some additional wording.
Sure.
And that, without any, any change, so.
Yep.
And that, but I think it's great just to, I'd like to just take some time and we can bring it up and see if there's anything, I haven't had a chance to look through them, but I think it's a great idea just to go through them and make sure there's nothing now that we've changed the other two or three policies that any of this needs to, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
So with that, anything else from board members for this evening before we close? Anything from Dan, Jay, Paul, Lisa?
No.
Good?
Yep.
All right, could I have a motion to go into non-public session, request under RSA 91 dash A, colon, three, section 2B, and I.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor, please, with a roll call vote, starting to my left, please.
I, Kevin Gray.
I, Tim Porter.
I, Bob Slater.
I, Sarah Loughlin.
I, Amanda Butcher.
Thank you, folks.